Alright, it is six o'clock and I will call the Township Plan Commission meeting for April twenty fifth to order. So we'll start with roll call. Dave, I am here. Jessica?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Lee is excused. John?
Here.
Casey?
Here.
And Kevin?
Here.
Approval of the agenda, anything to add?
No.
I'll make a motion. Justin? Second? Audience in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Forward? The approval of the minutes from the March twenty eighth and twenty meeting? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the March twenty eighth. Meeting. Forward? From the March twenty eighth. Anything that's stated. Forward. Audience in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Public count. We do have a public hearing tonight for a possible look at a rezone. This is a public comment that is three minutes. If you would like to speak on anything else on the agenda or anything else that's going on, you can go ahead and open that up. I will open that up at six oh two.
I have something to say.
Sure.
About the zoning on the commercially used one from residential to commercial?
Yeah, that'll be following here. We do have a, we'll have a public hearing specifically for that one. This is just, no, that's alright. That's what I say. You have anything else?
No, that's what I want. That's what I came for.
Usually they don't have a lot of public here, so it's kind of exciting today. So if there's anything anyone has.
Wondering what's going on in our front yard, that's all.
As far
um, what's going to happen in our front yard? I mean, it's like not this hard looking out and that's like what's gonna happen in our big picture window every day as far as, you know, it's, last time it was a concrete facility. Now I don't know what their plan is, but uh
Are you speaking to?
Uh, changing it to a commercial zone and the businesses that are gonna go there, what's gonna happen?
Okay, yeah, we're gonna, we will, we have a little public hearing on that one. Just a moment here, we're gonna open it up and we're gonna give everybody a chance that wants to speak on it, will have their chance to absolutely do that. Any other comments on anything else? Alright, we will close that at six oh four. Alright, we do have an item for public hearing tonight. It is for the rezone. Uh, what we'd like to do is get the person who's doing the request, give them an opportunity to speak on what they're looking to do. Is there someone here representing that interest?
Is it the Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, if you'd like to step up, can you just take a moment and tell the board what you're looking for?
Thank you all for your time this evening to hear our rezoning proposal. So, we're looking to rezone the property at eight nine eight McMillan's for, um, from R one to C two. Um, but keeping that front partial, that front parcel that's attached to that one as R one because we plan to really build our own personal home on the property.
One right next to the gas station?
Yes.
I know, I was just thinking that.
It's actually.
Sorry, no, no.
By the way, it does not.
So, the property that we're looking to rezone is this. This first, this front property is to stay presidential where we would build our personal home. This here and all the way to the back is, is where we're looking to rezone C two. And um, the reason we're rezoning is what we're looking to build there is a wedding venue. So, it would be set back. So it'd be back towards this lake area, still budded up closer to the C two property area. And then um, and then maybe, you know, a few couple, like a couple rental cabins is what we're looking at. Um, but you can see here that, you know, when we're rezoning this property from here to here, there is no room to build anything. So it's gonna be set way back in that property. And this is a total of eighteen acres or close to eighteen acres back here. So, it would be a wedding venue here and then maybe some um cabins there. And then um and then really with it setting back, we're really looking to reduce, you know, any um noise or light pollution, you know, and we're gonna be living on that property as well. Um, we have three children and that's everything to do there. So nothing like cement or anything like that. It's really, it's nothing more than what a church would bring in.
Okay. Alright, thank you so much.
Approximately fifty to seventy weddings per year, but
Fifty to seventy?
Yeah.
So what are you thinking for a wedding, when you say wedding venue, are you looking at?
Structure, of course.
A structure. It's um like a whole barn kind of structure.
Size, you were giving us?
Yeah.
Don't know yet.
And it's close to sixty by thirty, it's almost roughly.
Not enough parking, because they're gonna be parking on the street in front of the house.
Nope, nope. Parking's gonna be set back here as well, way back into this, um, into this property. So you should not see any parking.
One, one thing we're gonna ask is, we want, we would like to have the comments directed to us. They're gonna speak to us and then it will give her a chance to say that. We're gonna open it up for three minutes to everybody to have a chance. So you can write your questions down if you would. Uh, when we get to that point, just stand up, tell us your address so that Stephen can record that and then you have your three minutes to be able to ask that. If you have a specific question during that or something that comes up after that and would like to direct the board, um, bring the questions here, but we're trying to keep it so that the format is they're presenting to us. We're gonna have you do the same. You'll, you'll speak to us, not to each other. That way it keeps, any potential keeps the back and forth though. Yes, try to keep it down so we keep the process going. So thank you so much.
Yeah.
As far as the cabins, are you looking to like get a campground permitted or?
Um, it would depend on what the city requires, but we're looking just to have four small cabins. It's like a, you know, um, where the people that are renting the wedding venue could stay on site. Um, you know, really chimer safety and that's something with those, but no more than six people per cabin.
Any other questions?
Do you have a size in mind for the cabins?
Um, they would be small, um
Like tiny house small or, or?
Like one, yeah, it's like
Or like?
Five hundred square feet. Cause with a lo, like a loft, kind of a one bedroom loft, one bathroom and a mini kitchenette.
Steve, when we were talking about the tiny houses on that first level four and they would need to do a pod, is it because, were they trying to zone it, rezone it too or was it because of their current zoning? Are cabins allowed in C two?
So they could be allowed potentially as a hotel?
Oh, okay.
If they have the amenities and they're not considered camping cabins.
Okay, gotcha.
The tiny homes would have needed potentially a campground for my, because of the trailer.
Okay.
While we are approving the rezoning and the special?
No.
No.
Just the zone.
It's two separate things. The first thing would need to happen, which would be a rezone, which then would turn the property to what they would come back with as far as the presentation, but it would give them the rights of C two. Was it commercial before Steve, before it switched to R one?
Not that I'm aware of.
Anyone have any other suggestions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's six ten and we will go ahead and open up. If you do have a question that you'd like to ask, that you'd like an answer for, or if you had something out there, at that point, we may ask that you direct it to them or at least let them give the answer to us. But again, we'll keep it so that the comments continue to come this direction. Good. So I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at six ten. Can I say something else? Do we have someone who would like to speak? Okay.
Okay, fine.
My question is, if you could give, just give us your name and your address.
I'm Jack Wilker. I live right at the corner of, of McMillan and Hamilton.
Eighty six.
You know, I'm right at that spot.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm not trying to be a downer because I might hear different opinions here, but I'm not opposed to what they're saying myself. My wife might be, but I'm not. But my question is, if, not trying to be a downer, but if it failed, you know, and it just was a total failure, then that would still be a C two district if they sold out away, so it's open to anything. That, that's what it would be.
Correct.
It'd be rezoned to that kind of permanently unless it came back to this to get it rezoned again the other back way. Folks, that's, that's really what I wanted to ask. That's my question right now because I can pretty much see how this is developing. The main entrance is gonna be right across the road from me, right there on that corner, you know, and I could see them going back in there and it could be pretty good. My opinion, if they're way back there, because I walked back there a long time ago, you know, and I know where the lakes packed back there. Seems okay to me, but maybe not to some other people. I respect your opinions, but um, I'm just wondering, you know, it could get a lot different if things changed in the future.
It is, it is two separate things.
I know.
We would be looking, we can't do, well, we can't approve a site plan without having it already to C two. That's what they're asking to do. So it is, it is two separate processes, so it's not.
Which is why I'm against changing it to C two because it's nothing to do with what they're proposing, which I think could be very good. Um, I would be okay with that. Um, again, like you said, we live right across from there. That means the driveway into that place is gonna be directly, almost become a four-way right there on our corner. We have a very quiet neighborhood. We have children that go up to that. This is a very cul-de-sac. So, um, that's the thing. I mean, I wouldn't a hundred percent, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But are they gonna use the whole twenty acres or is part of it gonna be? And again, like you said, if suddenly it becomes something different, we've already approved it to be changed to C two. And then it becomes open to anybody. And then what are we looking at? Because then we got a road coming directly off our road and we don't know what's gonna happen at that point. So that's the problem. Not necessarily what business they're saying is gonna put in there, but it's the reason goes to the C two and what could come.
Just for the record, what was your name again? And I know it's
My name, I'm sorry, is Wanda Wilker.
Okay, and you're the same address?
And I'm twenty nine eighty six Hamilton. I'm right on the same corner directly across from the driveway where um, that would be coming in. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any? Yes.
I may speak for one second.
Yep.
My name is Mike Lindberg. Thank you for having us. I'm a local builder and real estate professional. One thing that I think might be beneficial to help clear a couple of questions that might be covered down in C's up is if we take a look at this mapping here, we have this front area, this portion here as a coastline that runs here. Subback restrictions for the township make this, all of this is relatively difficult to build something within the front portion of this parcel. So, in the event this was rezone to C two, I wouldn't be worried about things like gas stations or convenience stores coming in. Reason being, they'd have to push this way back and it would not be a very appealing place to put a gas station or something.
Exactly.
Exactly. You'd have to drive way to the back to be able to go to get gas or go get groceries or whatever it is. So, also with the gross area here, I know another question that was brought up is how is it gonna be used? You have about seven hundred fifty thousand other gross square feet. The building itself would be eighteen hundred, parking space, maybe twenty thousand. A little cabins, you're talking three, four thousand square foot. You're looking at maybe, you still have seven hundred and twenty five thousand square foot of untouched land. So, it's not gonna be a disturbance. Uh, it's gonna be set way back and any future use, even though it would be C two, they would have to do the exact same thing. Seeing this remaining R one, you'd have to build all the way back here. So commercial sites would be much farther away from the general public. So, I figure I could just speak on that because it could be something that we've discussed with Steve that would be pretty relevant, so.
Anyone else would like to speak?
I, I'm sorry. Uh, Nancy Muskevin, twenty nine forty nine Hamilton. Um, as they said, the driveway is going to almost be directly across from our road, which if it is a wedding venue, first off, let me say, I looked up what a C two was. And I'm gonna read what I got. Obviously it's off the internet, but it says, the commercial district or commercial zone is any part of a city or town in which the primary land use is commercial activities, shops, offices, theaters, restaurants, and so on. As opposed to a residential neighborhood or an industrial zone or the tax neighborhoods. I've been out there forty years. I don't wanna hear the bass of a band or a music. I've heard every time at two, three o'clock in the morning, them digging that pond. That noise travels even more so at night. It's a residential area. I do not wanna see any kind of commercial business in there. I don't have a problem if they're just going to build homes in there. That's fine. But I have a bad enough time listening to the cars going up and down McMillan as it is. You hear the motorcycles that are flying, they hit that corner and they go flying down. Not to mention the alcohol that would be involved because obviously almost, almost every single wedding reception has alcohol involved. Drunk people, they're not gonna take a, a left. They're gonna make, because there's gonna be a long line, they're gonna go straight through McMillan, or I'm sorry, straight across Hamilton, right by our house at two o'clock in the morning. It's a nice quiet neighborhood. I do not wanna see it coming. Um, the speed limit, we already have a problem with that. We have a problem with accidents on the corner. I think the least you could have done is notify everybody in our area, not just the four houses or six houses that are right there across because this is gonna affect them also as far as traffic goes, people wandering. I don't wanna see it happening. I'm sorry, I apologize. I have no problem with a home. I have no, but when you say you built a small cabin, you said one bedroom, one bath, but you also said which will hold six people. I, I don't know how you're gonna do that. That's a lot of people shoved into one cabin. Not to mention, like I say, all the noise that goes outside, inside, we're gonna hear it. No matter what, we're gonna hear it.
Alright, thank you.
Do you guys have a noise ordinance? I saw?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Do you, what time is that noise ordinance?
Eight P M.
No.
Eleven, eight A M, eleven P M.
And what is your decibel limit?
It's ten P M for businesses though. So, eleven for residential. We don't go by decibels.
It just, it's, yeah, it says something.
It says if you're a nuisance, then you're a problem.
Nuisance.
If you're creating a nuisance, then that's a problem.
So that gives a lot of
We, hey.
Business plan, they have outlined a specific decibel limit that they would adhere to and the timing experience of eleven P M. So they are very understanding that they would not want to be a disturbance to the general public.
Is the music on the outside? No.
It'll be in the inside of the building? And there will have doors that close all around. So when it does get later, they will block off the sound as well?
I'm believing that, because like I said, I heard them dig that pond and they broke the law then. At two, three o'clock in the morning, you can clap while you're running.
We're gonna, we're gonna try to give everybody a chance to, to talk here and kind of direct again the comments. Alright, do we have another? Go ahead.
Yes, Ashley Cooper. I live directly across the street where you would put your residence, uh, nine four three West McMillan.
Okay.
My big picture window looks directly out there. Love the view, love the forestry. Lived there for almost fifteen years. Bees are quiet. The kids walk to the gas station. And so when you're talking about putting a wedding, a wedding venue back there, okay, let's say we're having three hundred people at this wedding. Your parking can't accommodate them. Where are they gonna park? They're gonna park on the street in front of my house. I'm a third chapter. I sleep during the day. It's hard enough for me to get enough sleep with, with the alcohol that she's saying being involved, all these kids that walk to the gas station, ride their bikes in our neighborhood. It's really quiet. We're gonna have people like extra, extra traffic. It's bad enough with school, you know, coming in and out with school. I just think it's too much. If it's zoned, you know, R one already, it's zoned that way for a reason. So, why buy that property with any other intention other than building a home?
Can I just ask, as far as the venue goes, are you gonna have specific days of the week that it's running or is it open to every day?
Yeah, it will be um, generally Friday, Saturday, Sunday for, um, but Sunday, of course, would be, is shorter time frame. So, we have it planned where, you know, um, everybody's out by eleven or everything is turned off by eleven except on Sunday, ten. Um, and then they all, everybody has to be off of the property unless they're staying at the cabin um, by midnight. So clean up all of that. Um, we have, you know, it, it depends, you know, on what, what it brings in. Monday through Thursday, we thought brunch weddings would be, you know, a brunch or a dinner wedding. Um, if people aren't looking for something cheaper, um, or corporate, corporate event. Presentations or whatever it may be.
Any other people with counts?
And I
Good. If you can go ahead and give your name and
Tony Roberts, ten thirty, West McMillan, right next door.
Okay.
And I'm interested in these little cabins who's gonna stay there, people writing tests from our account. Yep, that was the plan. Yep. Ready.
You have three minutes. Anything else?
Yep. I, I didn't buy the property or
Alright, you said someone else had a count?
Yep, Adam Cooper, nine four three West McMillan.
Okay.
Same herd, right in front of where they built their house. And I would love to have, you know, his neighbor, uh, and keep it residential, but as far as commercial goes, no. Uh, because, just like he said, once the door is opened, the commercial, it could become anything. They could change their mind. It would easily be passed and it's sold in partial. I see, oh, we got a concrete facility over there and, you know, conveyor belts with rocks or whatever it may be. It's now, you know, you never know what it could be. Uh, but that's the, you know, I just, that's, if it was that, that's fine, but if it's C two or, and it could be anything. Right? Could be anything. So, uh, that's where I stand. Uh, and with them as well, the traffic and all, um, it could, it could definitely uh, be a problem for all of us. Um, if it got to that point where the alcohol and all that, but, um, other than that, I mean, yeah, the noise, the, the traffic, which is bad enough already, um, the, you know, the view, uh, which it is set back. And if there was a house there, that'd be nice to have a new house. It might actually raise the value of the neighborhood, but, um, but zoning a car show, I am against.
I'd add one more thing about
Actually, let me, let me get through after you get, go ahead.
Hi, my name's James Whitefeller. I'm the current owner of the property in question and, um, like, considering it's not my objective, the, the goal I'm seeking, um, I just wanted to speak on behalf of the people who it is because when I looked to do what I wanted to do, this building was overrun beyond the capacity that it states right here of people who objected and I did not feel very welcome. Um, hold on, hold on, hold on. Um, hopefully that we've been studious neighbors and to development that we have brought to the neighborhood has hopefully increased it up. Not hopefully, I know. We have sold the commercial portion that was on the front and for the value that we sold it for is definitely increased property values in the neighborhood. If this property, if this transaction goes through, it will definitely increase every neighboring property value along with it. Um, so plans they have from, I'm just, I, I, I sat back as an observer. I just wanted to sit back and hear what had, I, I didn't even know what all the plans were, so I'm getting as much knowledge as the rest of the neighbors in the neighborhood. If I lived in the neighborhood, but it sounds what they wanna do, they are trying to comply with every regulation set forth by the township. They, it doesn't sound like there's gonna be any of that shit's concrete recycling facility there. Um, some of, there, there's already some noise that happens in the area just from some of the surrounding businesses. This particular business is not gonna even be on the level of, um, the, the neighboring ones right on Whitehall Road, adjacent to the, the storage facility. They do some processing there. It's very obnoxiously loud. I know because I own property adjacent to it and I can hear it as well. Um, I have my plans. I've abandoned all my plans there. Um, somebody eventually is going to build there, something, you know. Uh, I, I would like to see, I, I, I don't, I live in Grand Rapids. I think that was one reason why, because I live in Grand Rapids and I'm not from the area. It, it also was, I, I, I think less of a welcome to me, but at some point, somebody's gonna move forward with some plans there and it just needs to be something that fits well. I, you know, I have a lot of respect for the area. I love the area. I wish I could move forward and build my dream home, uh, the property myself. Um, life throws all kinds wrench at each other. But, eh, by the sounds of it, um, it doesn't sound like the amount of traffic's gonna overtake a neighborhood. Um, it's, it had a very controlled time in, a very controlled time out. It's not like constant traffic. Um, and I, I would assume weddings are respectful events. I don't like Yeah, I, I, I feel that somebody who sets forth with a brand new venue like this is going to attract um, probably clients that have money, that are willing to spend it in the area. Um, and, uh, honestly, uh, I think it would do nothing but increase the values of the homes around it. It's not gonna have some industrial use. Um, as this gentleman here mentioned, if changed to R two, and as the owner of the property, I, I divided it the way it is. By the way, if somebody asked, has it ever been commercial before? An answer that technically it wasn't, but it, when I purchased it, it was one parcel that had two designations. I, when I had the engineering, put the division line there that separated the two. Technically there at one point was no real division line. It was just one twenty nine acre parcel that had a multi-designation. So, um, the division line as you see it today was as we had engineered it and divided. So, um, realistically, that was at the time, I, I don't wanna say it was up to the I just divided it along the same line. All the rest had been divided out because, just to keep things consistent. To keep things consistent. And, and I, I have one other quick question. Um, it's, it appeared to me and I, I may be wrong on this. It, it appeared they wanna rezone to C two and what was up on, uh, Whitehall Road, I believe was C one. C one has far more ability to have Yeah, C two is more limited on what can go on C two to begin with. So, uh, the C one up in Whitehall Road, I believe has more choices of what can go on that piece. C two is limited.
Can you, anybody up there going there?
Anything else, sir?
Yeah, that's not accurate though.
It's the other way around.
Okay, and I, and I, and I say correctly, if I'm wrong, I don't know. Is Whitehall Road C one or is it C two? It's C two? Okay, I said that again.
Anyone else? Go ahead, state your name. Go ahead, state your name.
My name is Erin Whitefeller. I'm a chief. Um, I do think it's a good idea for that property. I do think they're trying to follow the hours. I mean, the gas station is like open later than that and it has plenty of people coming to buy beer. You know what I mean? It's not like. I don't know, I feel like this is gonna bring people to the area who've never been around here that can see how awful the place it is. We never knew, like the out of town impression of Muskegon is very bad.
You got it.
But since we've had this property.
We're impressed.
Yeah, it's it's wonderful around here. We were not at all welcomed by the neighborhood in place. I I need.
It wasn't personal. Your welcome was in the asphalt.
Well, and honestly, that too had was well divided from the rest of the neighborhood. Either way, it's beyond us where like.
I I just.
Here we are now with somebody else's goals and of what they wanna do.
What about if they were to have a limit like one hundred people or?
Here's something else.
One thing we just, we wanna try to state, we have one person speaking here right now. Go ahead, if you would.
I just think that it's a good idea to bring business and new people to the area. Who will realize all the beautiful beaches around here and the fun things to do, the awesome restaurants. I don't know, I I think it's a good idea to bring new people to the areas. And if they're willing to follow rules as far as noise and all that. I mean, neighboring houses behind you guys, like we having a party, what are you gonna do about that? You know what I mean? Like, I don't think they're asking for anything too ridiculous.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we've already had two people, pretty much had everybody speaks. But I don't think you had your chance during the actual.
So um, I think just with that, we do look, I I didn't say that in my initial proposal. Is to partner with other small businesses in the area, bakeries, photographers, videographers, um DJs. So we really, I mean, we partnered with a small business for our builder. Um, you know, really looking to help other small businesses for him as well.
Do you want to, hasn't spoken yet that would like to? All right, I will close the public hearing at six thirty-two.
Can I add to it?
You've already had your your three minutes there.
It's in response to what they said.
Sure.
Doesn't matter.
Go ahead, we'll give you, we'll give you a minute here, go ahead.
Concrete was gonna be put in, you said there was gonna be an entrance off Whitehall Road.
That's our point, and this, this is, we're we're kinda directing it to.
I'm sorry, all right. When the, when the concrete was rejected, a couple of things. Everybody in the neighborhood was notified about it.
Okay, we're we're trying to keep this like to the what this particular parcel.
That's my point.
Okay.
This particular time only, and I went door to door. Only half a dozen houses were notified about this. There were other people, our neighbors right next door didn't know a thing about it. The guy right across the street who also would be affected by, knew nothing about it. The only reason we know something about it is because we own three hundred feet of an empty lot. Had we not had that empty lot, we wouldn't have known about it, okay? Now, the concrete, when it it was gonna go in, the entrance was gonna be on Whitehall Road. This shows the entrance on McMillan Road. I have a problem with noise mostly. I could hear everything that was going on in the old Half Moon Saloon because it was a bar. Pretty much the same idea. Music, burned up, alcohol, I heard everything that went on. I, like I said, I've been out here forty years. I was never so glad to see the Half Moon gone. I don't wanna see it go to go to commercial.
Okay, all right, appreciate that.
Every wedding I've been to as well, uh, there's always.
What are you saying, we're, we just wanna try, does any, did anybody not have an opportunity to speak? I think everyone's had their opportunity.
I don't think I used my three minutes.
Okay, I'll give you, give you another minute here, go ahead.
I just want you guys to talk, I might even explain to me C one and C two. The difference, does anybody know that?
Yeah, it's all, it's all in the zoning ordinance, which is all posted online, has been for years. Um, the entire zoning ordinance is online and it explains what's allowed in each district.
So no, not shallow explanation.
Um, well, C two permits um like twenty some different things. So. I mean, an animal clinic, a bank, a a bar and a tavern if it's licensed by the state. Uh, contractors like plumbing and electrical contractors, car washes, only if they have sanitary sewer. Catering, childcare centers, commercial greenhouses, computer and related technology businesses, exterminator service. Farm machinery and farm sales and repair furniture, uh funeral home, laundry and dry cleaner, physical therapy. Publicly owned building, recreational equipment and recreational vehicles. Um, services, um, including equipment, household goods, motor vehicles. Retail stores selling beer, wine and spirits if licensed by the state. Restaurants which drive through small engine repair, travel agency or other similar businesses. Which take into account several different things. Okay, so. No, there's, all the stuff you guys are concerned about is industrial, it's not in C two. So like, you can't do any concrete.
That's why I wasn't allowed to do it.
Right.
They would never be allowed to do it either. Because trust me, if they tried, this building would be overrun when people jump in.
It's the water, is that correct?
And honestly, it's a beautiful area, I definitely quite, I I would never wanted it. Had I thought this building was gonna be overrun with people, I probably would have had a different plan right to begin with. So it would be again to.
If, if this did pass and if it did fail, couldn't they always rezone back to residential? Being that.
So we would have to request.
Who would do that and make their property worth less probably, right? I think for that.
It'd be very unlikely.
I don't know if it necessarily make it worth less. I don't think that's really gonna concern myself because in R one, you can have um, you know, one acre lot. So I mean, somebody could put twenty houses in there.
Yeah.
And for example, like one thing that's already allowed in the R one is adult foster care with up to six adults. Or um daycare with up to seven kids. You know, so if you're looking at just traffic in my mind. Being zoned already one, already R one, if you had twenty houses in there that each had seven kids that were getting watched.
There we want to thank them.
It'd be three hundred vehicles coming and going a day. And that's how it's already zoned.
Yeah.
You're taking it a step further now.
But I I. I'm just saying how it's currently zoned.
Right.
Those things are already allowed, they'll becomes nothing. Um, adult foster care, no, they're needed here and there, but same thing, somebody can. Buy it. Put twenty houses in there to meet R one. Put six adults in each one that need adult foster care. And you'd have all kinds of traffic, you have all kinds of people wandering around.
Yeah, being that, being next door, I would.
So.
Who's paying for twenty houses there? It's low density.
It's a good.
It's allowed, all the things, that's what's allowed in R one. Is. As it's all great today, that could happen today without having any need and seeing else. That's what we're saying, it's not necessarily.
Yeah, we could have this.
All right, we will go ahead and we will close the public hearing at six thirty-seven. Any thoughts from the board?
Well, I mean, I get it, noise is a huge issue for people. I think that's the main sticking point here is traffic and noise. Um. I I can tell they're already asking for something above what the or what the noise ordinance is. So once they come for the special land use. Uh, businesses are only allowed to operate with basically making any noise from um, from ten P, from seven AM to ten PM. Um, so they would, I mean, they would have to really, really try hard to make sure that they were conforming to that. Otherwise, I think they, the township would have just a load of written complaints submitted about the noise. Um.
It's. A couple of things. Um. So you have Whitehall Road right there. It's a pretty busy road. That one isn't exactly like small, quiet place. Um, you know, there's a lot of traffic going up and down through there to get further west. Um, you have all the C two right there. And then this same property was, I mean, we just entertained another commercial use on the same exact spot recently. So it's obvious that there is desire for that property for commercial use. Um, it's a good spot for it. It's right up against a bunch of other commercial use. Yeah, and the fact that the setback off the road because of that. Uh, being there, you know, it's very limited what somebody can put back in there, even if they wanted to. And then. Here's the other thing, and nobody's gonna like this, but it's the way that it is, it's reality. I lived at the end of a dirt road and there's nothing after me, just a bunch of woods. Yeah. I've lived there for over a decade. And at any point, I don't own the lot next to me. I don't own the lot around me. And I have lived there for over a decade and I love it. And in the back of my mind, this entire time, I thought, I need to buy those lots. I need to buy those lots, I need to buy those lots. Because at any point, somebody could come in, knock all the trees down. And build a house there, they could build a bunch of houses there. And I would have zero leg to stand on, hey, my kids run around the, what? Nothing, I don't own it. If if you wanna have control over what happens on a piece of property, you have to own it. Okay? Within reason, I mean, like, they're not talking about putting in a car manufacturing facility there, okay? Um. So I mean, if if you wanna have control over it, you have to own it. This is America. It's right up against other commercial. It's the second time in recent time that I know of that commercial use has been discussed here. I, I have no problem with this. Anyone else? Can I answer a question?
I have a comment. I I try to look at the big picture, the the summary to me is that, look, this is gonna be multiple homes. Or to their benefit, a part-time professional business. That will most likely be quiet much more than it'll be noisy. That's how I see it, you know, I wish them all the success, if this thing gets passed. It'll be a, may even be seasonal. But you know, it it'll be quiet, you know, for the most part. There won't be a lot of people going in and out, there'll be, hopefully, they'll have weddings there, whatever. Most of the time, it'll be dead silent. Or the other option is maybe somebody wants to put three. Three, four, who knows how many private residences in there. Which uh. Well, we all have neighbors. So I I don't know if I'm on, you know, target with that, but that's, that seems like your options.
Once it's zoned, the commercial, anything can go in, that's the problem.
Well, not anything. Well, I mean, that's because special use permit for most everything in a C two. So, well, I mean, well, except the things I read to you, so.
That would also keep in mind. You said you wanna build your personal residence right there, so they're probably not gonna want a bunch of. Extra stuff going on back there other than what they're proposing.
Yes, I mean, we have three children. And we have three children. But on the same token, they could decide they don't wanna be in front of their wedding venue anymore and sell right in here. So, I mean, that, it's great to think about, but I, you you don't wanna put too much weight into that.
Their house would be a barrier if it's within that neighborhood.
That's true.
If they choose to continue.
No, but they're, he's saying their physical structure would be a barrier from, from the neighborhood.
It's gonna be nice. If they didn't choose to live there, they could leave it R one and just leave it empty. Or we decided not to let it.
That would be great that the the plans just do not be forever, that'd be great.
All right, we're at a, we're at a point where we're just, we're in the process where we have to go through, done the public hearing. But we're just trying to get the process now for us to be able to kind of formulate everything there. Um. Anybody have any questions or have any comments?
Well, I mean, it definitely doesn't reach the level of spot zoning. It it fits in, it checks all the boxes, so it's, it's, it's a perfectly legal zoning switch if we so choose. Just in case anybody was wondering.
And one of the pluses that I saw when we looked at the lot today is if, if that first part remained as R one. And again, it didn't say it in, you know, thing, I know that you're saying now that that would be where you, where residents would be. If you have an on-site person there to oversee this, you then, a lot of times, you'll see this in a, in a, a business. The owners know where to be found, and if there is a problem, you can't get any action. They have to find out who owns the property, who are they contacting. This would be someone that would be right there handling. And again, being a good business person and knowing how this process is work. This is, as John had said, we've, this isn't the first time, this particular area has come up. And one of the concerns and the thing that really is nice for us to see is when you do see the neighbors come out and say, hey, listen, here's what our concerns are. If we don't hear that, a lot of times, it's not easy for us to understand what that is. We didn't have any complaints. Usually, we have people that will write things and state what their concerns were. Uh, we didn't get any of that. It's time and again, having this all brought forward puts us in the position. But the the process right now is, it's two separate things. We are not dealing with what is going to be there, we're dealing with what the zoning change would be. And that's, that's why we're kind of in that process now to say, we can, we can have someone present what they would do. Once we change it from R one to C two, that would be the the process that we go through there.
That's my question.
Just one, one second, we're just, um, so for me, again, that was something that I considered, which if that is the opportunity there, it is going to be some. We'd have some control on the site there, which is, which that is good.
My final comment is, I definitely do support looking at, and I don't know if it's the township board or if it's the planning commission that looks at notifications. Um, our current township supervisors heavily into community involvement. And I think note, increasing the notification radius would would allow the township, the planning commission stuff to get more feedback on, on things. I I do agree that, I I think it's three hundred feet.
Three hundred by zoning.
Right, so that's why.
I saw more work for you.
Yeah.
Jeffrey would love it though, he wants community involved.
State law is three hundred feet.
Okay.
Um, when I do it, I administratively up it to three twenty-five, just to remove any margin of error.
Okay.
And if there's a lot that's close, I'll throw it in as well.
Okay. A lot of things we wouldn't, I mean, maybe if we think about um looking into that, that just make a special provision for things that might be noisy or things that might affect further than that. A lot of things that we, our special uses do not really affect anybody but the adjacent property owners, so. But that's for another time, but put it on your list.
Any other comments?
Are you faithfully with running the wedding venues now, are you involved in that business now or?
I am involved in a very um, much larger bus, healthcare business currently. So I manage, I'm a nurse by trade, I manage um multiple offices. A nurse outpatient, I have three offices currently, one in Muskegon here. Um, and then a couple in Grand Rapids. So budgeting, business running, I, yeah, all of, all of this. And then my husband is in, um, he has a criminal justice degree, so we'll, we, you know, you know, help a little bit with some of the enforcement. He's um, kind of that backup. And then um.
We may all use that, so we appreciate that.
And I, and I have, um, I've been doing that for seventeen years.
Casey Jordan, is it? You mentioned noting, it's only two block, two, two roads. Nobody else was notified, you mentioned, you think they should be notified also?
Well, I think it's something for us to talk about in the future, yes.
Question, why wouldn't they be notified also?
Because right now it's three hundred feet, he goes up to three twenty-five.
The road is gonna be, they're gonna be used, our road, especially on Hamilton.
But this is only for this, the zoning, that when, when it comes to their, their site plan, then you should encourage your neighbors to show up for that meeting.
Keep that, just put it in. Zoning of it. And again, we, we, we do what's legally required and we do it even beyond a little bit, which is, so, and it, and it's difficult. Cause again, this area, when we had that gentleman came in before.
It put restriction to not stop this building.
I was gonna say, that was, that was the power of our.
It's on everybody's door.
Yeah, well, leave it, I'm well aware of that.
All right, we're gonna just ask real quick, order here, we're gonna, at this point. Or anyone that at this point would like to either make a motion?
I make a motion to approve fifteen twenty-three national to rezone from Iowa one, Old Hattie Residential District to C two Regional Community District.
We will take a real call vote. Kevin? Jason?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Todd?
No.
Jesse?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
At this point, we did pass that. We did make the motion there, we'll go forward. At that point, we'll be, the next step, Stephen corrects his votes to the board?
Right.
We're up to section seven of our meeting notes here, some communication here. One thing that did Stephen mention, asked the question, there is a breaking the zoning code. If anyone's interested in sending one of those, that was pamphlet, or was that? Get information on that, if anyone's interested in that.
So, again?
We can, we can see if that is something that anyone else noticed. That might be one. I haven't been to that one yet. It does sound like it's a newer class or whatever, so get some information on that. We have no unfinished business, and now we have new business. We have the additions, we have SP 23-04. The Fulton Road addition to... Just Ethenbar. Yeah, Ethenbar. One, one thing we're gonna ask is if, if there is questions or anything, you guys are more than welcome. If you wanna say, we could, if you could do that, just if you have some questions up there, we're gonna have another gentleman, we're gonna continue on with our agenda for tonight. All right, thank you so much. All right.
We should have put Dave first.
Oh, my God, I think we still... Educational. We are up to, Dave, if you wanna take a second here and tell us what your proposal is.
We'd like to extend my, uh, pavilion so it's, uh, closer to the, uh, actual building. That's a 24-foot addition.
That's gonna go from the building to the current pavilion?
Yeah, from the pavilion up towards the current building.
Okay.
Be attached to the pavilion, but not the building.
Isn't there a camp here, something over there right now? It seems like, like a...
Well, that's, yeah, because some... You've been there in over a year. That's been gone for a while. It used to be a, it used to have Tucson camp.
That's just what I last remember.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It used to have Tucson camp, it's there, but right now, it's, it's pavilion. It's a, it's a 40 by 40, two-foot pavilion, that standard. I just wanna get 24 feet to the end of it. Encroaching the middle of the property, obviously, it's, it's planning already.
From the existing height and everything going right to the building?
Everything. Just a continuation of last project.
Dan took a look at it, it does make sense to be able to just continue that right to the building.
Same, everything is there.
It's closing the gap, right?
Yep.
With gaps out there.
Yep. Anyone have any questions or? Anyone like to make a motion or? A motion to approve PR 23-04, addition to the Ethenbar Pavilion as stated and drawn in architectural supplemental. Take a real call vote. Dave, yes? Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
Casey?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Dave. All right, and then we have item two under new business, these draft ordinance. We, 23-04, temporary special use permits, special event venues and enforcement process. Is the stuff that's added in, or is that for the lawyer, or is this stuff? Just our record, what we went through?
Yeah, this is, okay.
Okay. I just have bad memories of all the times when we get those ones from, from the lawyer and that, I was like, wow. Got stuff in there that makes your hair hurt. This one was very easy.
The, uh, difficult kind of figuring out how to do the septic requirement we talked about. And I think it's Sheboygan County has a, has a camping ordinance, reuse of camping trailers. And they say, um, the way they word it is, a method of sewage disposal approved by the health department.
I think that's, that makes it easier for us than it would anybody else.
Yeah, definitely not necessarily be a septic system, but it more than likely is, but it's gonna fall into being the health department's court. Have to make sure that they're paying up on their...
And so this, if, if this is something we agreed to, then this is again, the one we would like send it to public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. All right, so what we're looking for here is just to give the, any more wordsmithing or if anything, anyone sees. Casey, you're usually our wordsmith expert.
It's the only one who's pretty good to me.
The typos. I remember the principal discussion revolved around, uh, what and how long? What kind of, you know, camper, mini house, tent? And then we talked about, well, they need septic, are they gonna bury their garbage? You know, those kinds of things and the physical things. And then, uh, we talked about, uh, how long this ordinance will allow these temporary settlements, I don't know what to call them, usage.
Is there a, like, if someone were to say, when they're asked, uh, sewage and waste disposal that has been approved by the Muskegon County Department of Public Health, is there's a pre-drawn-up list of items that they could, how they would accomplish that, or is it something they need to then seek the?
They would need to seek the public health approval.
And it's based on square footage and all the other stuff that they would have, okay? That's why we can't really give a generic, here's a handout to give them the starter point, uh...
In, in B, um, you crossed out the stuff about identification signs and contractor signs. Is that now covered in the sign section?
Yes, that's covered in the sign ordinance.
But that's not.
It won't require temporary special uses for any of the signs.
Definitely not.
So, folks with an RV, motorhome, COV, Class C, whatever, toilets, wastewater. This verbiage allows that, but they then have to leave the property and go dispose of their... In other words, can they use this, they use their property without having septic installed? Understand it'd be awkward, but is that?
If it's approved by the county health department, then it would be allowed.
Okay.
Under this...
It's all to the county.
Yeah.
You wanna stay on that.
Why don't, yeah, I mean, I don't know anything about what's, what's proper, so let them, they do it for a living.
Okay.
But I think maybe you're saying, maybe it was...
I think that was some board members.
The county, the county might say, well, if you're camping for less than 30 days, we don't care.
Yeah, maybe they will.
Maybe, I don't know, but that's a possibility. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Got you.
And then the time limit, whether you're on a parcel with a home or on a vacant parcel, it's going to be 30 days for permit. And then there's two permits being issued, typically, per year. So, if you wanna keep it 30 days, or you could change that as well, because that'd be two months out of the year.
Would anybody ask for any more than that? It seems like a lot of need, but...
Every now and again, I'll get a couple people, but they're just putting up, live out of their campers.
Yeah.
And if they have well-inseptic homes, do they not fall under the 30-day permit thing?
It's up to the county.
They still would.
Well, that's only, the 30 days is only if, if they're part-time. No, a lot with a house already on it.
Okay.
180 on the vacant.
No, it's gonna be, um, it's going to be 30 of the day.
It says 180 if you're building a house.
It's been, and I did up that from the 90, because that's just with the way construction's had gone.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Increase that.
It might need like three years.
They might need a year, but not themselves.
If they want black windows and doors, they might need like four years.
I've been watching that one that's over on Michelinda that's almost to the end on the left-hand side, and they've been going after that with a camper park there through the winter months, and I'm going, I'd be getting sick of that, that they're...
Just gonna rush from the road to the mission there.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, he doesn't, I'm helping him out there. He doesn't live with that camper, he's just gotta sit.
Oh, okay. I gotta say, man, he's...
He's building that by himself, basically.
Yeah, he's, he's though, so he's...
His trust is up now, it's, well, yeah.
Let's comment too, have a camper there to store stuff in or... That's really the hardest section to be with, uh, supplies.
Yeah. Paragraph being under temporary special use permit, I, I, can't we just get rid of that? Full paragraph, um, and the reason I say that, I guess, is, you know, it talks about storage and building, supplies and machinery, blah, 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 if it's in connection with a construction project. I've been doing construction projects for 25 years, some, some short-term, some long-term, as long as two or three years. Anywhere from Bear Lake to Manistee to Grand Rapids East and, you know, we find a neighbor's field or something and say, can we lease this for the next month? Or three months or two years or whatever, and put dirt piles and trailers and this and that. I've never went to a city or a township or anywhere.
Yeah.
It's just like expected, I guess, right? There's a project.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, that, does anybody even, I guess, follow that or even?
I had not, I sounded more...
You know, your comments be more, be, because I'm not in...
I never asked anybody, you just go, I mean, it's a construction project.
Did the road commission get a permit to store their two pieces of equipment over there? Just joking, but, I mean, they're doing, they say they parked on that guy's lot. They're exempt, but nobody asked.
I know, it's always been there, but I guess to me, it's somewhat of...
I, I mean, I don't know, have you ever issued one, a temporary permit?
Devil's advocate, what, what if we don't have that, and is there anything that someone would then be allowed to do that could be a problem?
I mean, what, what, like you said, you found a way, you just, I just never asked, and no, no township or nobody's ever said anything, right? It's like, there's a vacant piece of property next door to this school you're building or whatever, no, but you just go, I mean, it's, it's project.
Yeah. And this, without it, you know, myself and Clay, we're not going to, if we see construction under an open permit, we're not gonna
Right.
follow up on enforcement or it...
Or is it, or is it there for something else, I guess, I mean, I, I mean, is there something that helps?
Primarily for the signs and supply, for the signs. And then as the sign ordinance was changed, just became obsolete. It would also be for, like, temporary storage buildings where, uh...
It was a long-term project.
Yeah, temporary storage building, so if you wanna store your, um, you know, put up a shed, store your tools there. And also, you know, if you wanted to put up a pole barn and then build, you could allow as a temporary storage building and then convert it to a permanent structure. Now, we could remove materials and machinery.
I was just thinking, full paragraph, I'm not turning it, I'm not turning it up again, I just, well, things we do everywhere.
Yeah, because, yeah. It becomes like now, we're suddenly the township, that when you're building a house, you have to come in and get a permit to store, like, your building materials there, and that's just really, wow.
Really done that.
Right, nobody does that.
I mean, what's the point of having it in there if nobody does it? And if it becomes a nuisance, there's other areas in the ordinance that will cover it becoming. If they leave the debris and they're blowing everywhere, there's, there's other avenues that people could complain.
So, cut B and then just move everything else up, so we would actually end up with, it was just an idea, see?
It seems unus, unusable to me, I guess, it's unused.
Would you like me to put temporary working quarters, fatened areas?
Yes, sure.
Sure.
If it eliminates a whole section, sure.
And the, and the parking areas, E there, um, there, there's no time limit associated with that, which I'm not concerned about, but I don't know if that was overlooked, or if it's gonna be a case-by-case, or if anybody else is concerned about it. I just notice there's...
I would assume that'd be for events.
Well, isn't that covered in the special events section already?
If you're having a special event, you'd have to get the special parking?
A seasonally.
Season, okay.
I don't know, the seasonal use.
I think with this, so with this, so, I guess, an example is, so that, a couple zoning administrators previous, there was a couple of trucks, I wasn't charging them even or anything, but a couple of trucks that do all the tree work for Consumers Power, and they ask to park in the grass field across from our store. Down there between the store and the, and the expressway around. And that's where this applied, because I didn't even know that was in there at the time, this was years and years ago, and then chief up to live that they can't park there because you get a temporary use permit for them to park there, and I'm like, they're, they're cutting limbs for the power lines for the entire community.
Yeah.
They just need sort of park.
It's considered junky.
Right.
Just like that.
Like, they don't wanna be there anymore.
So, I think that's what they, that might be there for, is something like that too, you know, I mean, some like, somewhere to park if they're out of town or whatever, you know, so...
Shows a slash through E, but then there is actually brumage for E.
Is it, is E to remain, but just to the changes?
Yeah, that's a typo.
Okay, I was making, so I was thinking, maybe that's...
Yeah, this is kind of the, the red and white top is just kind of working to show you the changes.
Okay.
And then that. There's an actual lamp that, yeah, too, that's important to light.
I like this. I don't know if we've ever done it this way before, but I really like the lead, red print a lot.
There's only way she can.
I'm like, you have to read every single sentence and you don't really...
It made sense for this section, because there's a lot of change, additions.
Anyone else have anything else? Anyone like to make a motion?
Does the, uh, just with the, the other sections where actually would be enforcement?
That would be us too.
If I remember, like, the, the board wanted that up, didn't they?
Yeah.
Enforcement, you know?
Yeah, and I basically just added each, reflect the, the requirement.
Okay.
Doesn't, no, they have the right to feel it, chance mediated from what I've seen now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I still, I think it's a little relaxed myself, but I think that's all the board wants.
It's like giving your kid three chances.
Right.
I don't, I don't want it done.
Three chances, then just final warning.
Right, right.
I'm ready.
Another matter, it's like...
Yeah, yeah, and there's like no, no case in history if anybody applying a third time who didn't just comply the first time.
This, this is gonna be. Don't come down to these people who knocked the steps off of their house so that you couldn't go to the front door to serve the notice, that was like.
That's extreme.
Man, I'm going, that was, someone read the law, though, I never read it, they would have followed the law rather than just, uh.
Before reading out here, Metallica had wedding up there, you know?
That's on anyway. Something like we hit all the buttons, I think, that we talked about the last section there, anyone like to make a motion? You got all the changes? Even you got those?
Yes. Grab us. Take out section B and move temporary working quarters to section A.
We have, anyone dinner waiting or anything that would like to make a motion? Make a motion, good show.
We need to make it, we need to push it to a public hearing. He really has dinner waiting.
I know. I'll make a motion to move draft ordinance twenty-two, twenty-three, dash, zero, eight, public hearing.
With the changes.
With the changes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, we didn't vote. I supported, but we didn't vote yet.
Uh, Dave, yes? Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
All right, favorite topic for tonight, um, Chris, I was gonna give you one of Jeff's things, you wanted to read.
I'll take it home for a night.
Do I have anyone that would, uh, like to take a motion to adjourn? Take a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I want to see one time when that one is opposed.
No.
Ever what wish?
Okay, so Todd and Brian, yes. When you said, when you talk.